Lead us into Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Announcements. Ms. Hunter?
Yes, my husband had an opportunity to participate in the principal for a day at JFK Middle School on last weekend. He ranted and raved about how great the program was, the teachers, and I just wanted to give them a shout out and say thank you for inviting us, and we're very proud of the job that you're doing there with our children.
Thank you. Ms. Behring?
Yes, thank you. I had the privilege of attending the Veterans Day program with numerous other elected officials at Goodwood School Elementary with Principal Tracy Gibson. It was a fabulous program, was quite emotional, 250 attended, and many were veterans. As an historical rendition was read by various students interspersed with young voices singing patriotic songs, each branch of the service was recognized as veterans stood during the playing of the anthem that represented their branch of the service. This is an activity that I hope to attend every year, it was wonderful. Also, I visited Cole Elementary to observe their community schools model. I had the opportunity to observe an invigorating English language class for parents. At Cole, they provide three levels of English classes for parents. Parents meet about two days a week, and they have a family involvement specialist, they have after-school tutoring that will begin actually next semester. The YMCA with Metro Schools offers a reading clinic under the auspices of Tammy Lipsy. They have reading recovery, they have reading interventions, math tutors from Vanderbilt, they have a literacy partnership through Trevecca and MNPS where they offer two hours of job embedded training per month. They have 10 tutors that come daily to work with students, and they have 40 volunteers. They also just built a new playground. MNPS used to have six health clinics through United Neighborhood Health, and now I understand we only have one in the district, which is at Glencliff, so I'd like to investigate how we can bring those back. I had the opportunity to visit Schwab Elementary as we began to think about American Education Week, and I had the opportunity to be in Ms. Kara's classroom where she taught a science study, which was a unit on honeybees. And she had microscopes, she had real honeybees there, she had microscopes, magnifying glasses, lots of hands-on experiences for kids as they were working in small groups. And Ms. Kara was a master teacher. She was able to teach, monitor, answer questions in each individual group, go back and forth, she was amazing. And at the same time, I noticed she was asking very high-level questions and listening so that every child had the opportunity to respond. We got to hear Diane Ravitch this past week, and congratulations to all the parent groups who sponsored this event at Vanderbilt, where over 500, 400 people attended and five board members. We all know about the announcement of the ASD school, and it will be in Madison, and I just want to go on record as saying I am against this takeover. The scores that Neelys been Madison and the scores that Madison Middle have surpassed the ASD scores across the state. There are other schools in Metro that have more, that had been on the list longer, and they have more needy students. There is an urgency, we think about being on the priority list as a sense of urgency, but when we think about taking four years to phase in the school, the sense of urgency is lost. The data, I understand that there will be a parent meeting at both schools at the same date, which is December 4th at 5:30. And I talked to Chris Barbick for the last, well, today, and I'm hoping that can be changed because there are other elected officials like myself that want to attend both meetings. I want to hear from the parents, I want to hear from teachers, and so I'm hoping that that will change. That concludes my announcements.
Yeah, Ms.?
I do have just a couple. I want to say a big thank you to the Pencil Foundation and to Principal Kelly Akers at Homage Elementary for sponsoring a great principal for the day last week. Ms. Akers had several activities planned for my mornings, beginning with morning meeting in Ms. Morris' class, and then reading a Thanksgiving-themed book to the class, and making it even more special as that our oldest grandson is in Ms. Morris' class, so that was really kind of special, I enjoyed that. And I wanted to extend my condolences to the family and friends of Elaine Foreigner who lost her battle to cancer. I missed her memorial service last Friday, but I understand it was a great tribute to a great woman and educator. We have lost an incredible champion for education and for our students in Metro, and Elaine will be missed by all.
Ms. Kim? Mr. Pinkston?
Thank you. Tonight, I'm bringing notice of a resolution that I'd like to bring to the Board floor in early December that would urge members of Tennessee's congressional delegation to support President Obama's action on immigration and work toward comprehensive immigration reform. As we know, the President last week brought forth an executive action that will ease the threat of deportation for the parents of millions of Americans, America's K-12 students. This will lead to more family security and less emotional distress for an inestimable number of MNPS students and parents. Unfortunately, instead of discussing the need to advance comprehensive reform, some members of Congress are trying to block the President. Most members of Tennessee's congressional delegation are not going to care what we, the elected national school board, has to say, but I have talked to Congressman Cooper's office, and they agree that it's important for us to let him know that we've got his back, and that on behalf of Tennessee's most diverse school system, we do support the push for comprehensive immigration reform and what the President has proposed. So I'll draft that resolution and circulate it well in advance of the December 9th Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston. Ms. Behrs?
Yes, I want to give a congratulations to the Hillsborough High School Borough's football team, they are 13-0 undefeated, and will travel to Memphis this Friday to play against Ridgway in the state semifinals.
Thank you. Ms. Rowe?
I had the opportunity to serve as principal for the day at Harpitz Valley Elementary, and I wanted to thank Dr. Amory Gleason for inviting me to participate, I had a great day there.
Thank you very much. And the good news is, we have the principal from Whites Creek to come and share some amazing things that are going on where the creek is rising, I understand, yes.
Good evening, Dr. Register and school board chair, Dr. Gentry, distinguished school board members. I want to thank you all for allowing me to share with you all the amazing transformation that is going on every day at Whites Creek High School. And so tonight, I have with me some of my amazing, two of my amazing principals and academy coach, Mr. Matthew Patterson, who will be academy principal for In-N-Out, Mr. Marcus Marshall, who is my academy principal for alternative energy, sustainability, and logistics, and then our academy coach, Ms. Jones Hall. So I thank them for being here, have a student that's on the way, want to hear from our students' voice as well. As I reflect over the past two years of being the executive principal at Whites Creek and being a graduate of Whites Creek, I am mesmerizing the transformation that's taking place on a daily basis. This transformation in the way we do teaching and learning, transformations, how we even engage our business partners is really noteworthy. Attendance is 93 percent, we've seen a decrease in our discipline. My first year becoming principal at Whites Creek, we decreased our discipline by 526 incidents, and so we're excited about that at Whites Creek. Also, my first year coming to Whites Creek, we were at one, our quest for this literacy revolution, we were at a one. On T-VAS, my first year, we moved it to a three, and then last year, we moved from a three to a five in T-VAS and literacy, so we're excited about the work that's being done there. Our students in alternative energy received the governor's award because of their ability for energy and renewable resources. They were driving a car that was made on soybean fueled by our students. At Whites Creek, the teacher was bold enough to allow them to put that in his personal truck and drive to the state lines, they got recognition from the governor. Only two schools in the whole state of Tennessee received the governor's award, Whites Creek was one, and another school here in West Tennessee, so we're excited about that. The Academy for Community Health, last year, we received, they received the award for being a model status, and we're excited about that as well. Our In-N-Out students, they are sworn officers of court, and we're excited, they, last year in mock trial, they tied with first place in best defense with MBA, so we're excited again about that and the work that's being done. It's noteworthy as well to mention that Whites Creek, being the number of students that we have at our school, we had last year the largest number of students taking and passing for the dual enrollment, and we indeed delighted to see that taking place. So it is good to see the transformation that's taking place at Whites Creek, thank you all for recognizing that and continue to push us in our endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move into governance issues, the consent agenda, Ms. Kim.
A, recommended approval of contract for HVAC renovations at Hume Bog Magnet High School, Dylan Smith, McCann, and Sheet Middle Contractors. B, recommended approval of contract for master plan study for Nashville School of the Arts, Tuck, Hinton Architects. C, recommended approval of contract for lead consultation at various schools, Green Studio. D, recommended approval of supplement number two for Granbury Elementary School additions, Atticson and Associates Architects LLC. E, recommended approval of request number three for purchase of furniture, Stratford High School, GBI Incorporated. F, recommended approval of request number 19 for district-wide maintenance repairs and general construction, Health Science Simulation Lab at Hillwood High School, Southland Constructors LLC. G, recommended approval of request number two for banned storage cabinets, Hume Bog Magnet High School, Winger Corporation. H, awarding of purchases and contracts, one CDW Government, two Dell Marketing LP, three Dell Marketing LP, four Hezil Associates LLC, five Impact International LLC, six Lee Bowman LLC, seven Mid-Continent Research Education and Learning, McGrell International, eight New Teachers Center, nine Seamen's Industry Incorporated, 10 Students Taking a Right Stand, 11 The Evaluation Group LLC. I, approval of math textbook committee, and that is it.
I'll move away from the agenda, is that agenda is ready?
It's your second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move into reports, director's report, we'll start with the diversity management task force report, and followed by a priority schools update.
Madam Chair, I'll move out to take a seat at the table because I have several people that will join me. If it is. Last, the diversity task force work chair, come on that way. Yes, we are. This will be just a very brief set of remarks about the diversity task force report. You did receive in your packet a copy of the annual report, and we're not going to go through that. We did have a diversity task force meeting last week, and we'll have just a couple of comments about that. But I also, and we're not going to have long reports from all these folks, don't be alarmed by that, but I do want to report to introduce four work group chair. Our diversity management plan has a structure, and that structure is to have four work groups that examine impact on diversity across our district and across the work that we're doing. And these gentlemen are the four chair of these work groups. Chris Weber for school options, Harold Finch for staff, Paul Changus for school performance, John Ford for resource and investments. This past year, we feel like the diversity management plan is being implemented. I would just point out a few examples of evidence. The Martin Luther King School Expansion Plan is diversity sensitive. Where we belong, our school plan is diversity sensitive. Antioch Elementary School Plan is diversity sensitive. The pre-K centers plan is diversity sensitive. Planning for student-based budgeting is equity sensitive. The free meals program is a significant equity contributor. Our work groups that these gentlemen chair are functioning. The student assignment task force has effectively modified its role to diversity monitoring, and I'll ask Chris to say a word about the task force meeting the other night. Our executive leadership team meetings now routinely include a discussion of the implications of diversity on decisions and operations in the district, and I think that gets right to the heart of the diversity plan. Annual diversity reports represent a sea change in format, content, metrics, and inclusion of school performance. Result of these reports are the changing internal discussion on diversity-related issues. From our baseline here, 2012, 13, our diversity, the demographics of our district are basically stable except for continuing growth in Hispanic enrollment, we're up to 22% of the total now. Just a year ago, a little over a year ago, 18 months ago, that percentage was 19%. And we're maintaining our diversity level, and that maintenance is the first marker of success. The first priority is to do no harm, if you will, or to not cause a greater segregation through our definition in the district, and we've accomplished that. I will say, though, that the efforts are to institutionalize the diversity plan in its infancy. We have to continue to feed it, we have to continue to work on it, and I think finding a one person to really drive this work is something that's needed as we go forward. I'll ask our gentleman to just say a word, each of our co-chair to just say a word about their committee work, and then we'll be through this. Chris?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Register. Last week, I felt that we had a very successful meeting with the diversity task force, Mark North is the chairperson, and many of you were there last week, so thank you as well. During that meeting, we essentially covered this report and went through it with a little more detail, but in addition to that, we talked in a little detail about the new model pre-K centers that opened this year, and the diversity there, and where we plan to continue to promote diversity in those centers going forward from this point. In that meeting, we opened it up for each of the four work group chairs to also brief the task force on the work that we've been doing internally over this past year, and the future that we see, and some of the recommendations that we're making to Dr. Register and executive staff. And it was a good opportunity for them to give us feedback and input and basically collaborate on that, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Ford, and I represent the Resource Investment Work Group, which consists of seven individuals of a variety of backgrounds and perspectives. Our focus has been to develop a methodology by which we can measure how effective our resource allocations are in terms of preserving and enhancing diversity within our schools. With that focus, we are looking at principals, we try to make sure that principals have enough control over their resources so as to personalize their design and resource choices. There are two efforts that we are focusing on in terms of personalization effort of resources. One is trying to increase resource equity by funding schools based on student needs, and the second one is to empower principals to make resource decision based on individual needs of the student, and that is student, school-level flexibility, which we currently have implemented.
Good evening. My name is Harold Finch, I am the chair of the Staff Diversity Work Group. Just to share with you our purpose, our purpose is to establish a focus on enhancing diversity among the certificated and support staff of our district. One of the key efforts that we're making strides in is to recruit and place practices that amplify the diversity experience of students throughout our district. Some of the work that we're doing right now, which I guess I need to share with you that we have seven members that are a part of the work group, but some of the work that we're doing right now is to establish professional development that increases the cultural competency of our staff members, particularly our leaders in the district. Another thing that we're looking to focus on is collaborating with our leadership and learning division to ensure that our coaches, our lead principals are modeling the best practice or the, taking the lead when it comes to diversifying, supporting the certificated staff in our schools. And just to share with you, proud to announce that we gained five elementary schools and three middle schools in this second phase of the diversity management plan, and we're looking for some additional successes to come. Thank you.
Great.
I'm Paul Changus with the Performance Work Group. Our goal is to have diverse schools that are also academically successful. We utilize the academic performance framework to look at the relationship between performance and diversity. I won't spend a lot of time on the framework, you're very familiar with results there, but just as we saw with the framework, very little relationship between growth, performance, improvement, and economic disadvantage, we saw very little relationship between growth and diversity, so that's a positive. We also saw improvement last year for both diverse and non-diverse schools. But the next step, and one that we started, including the report that we did earlier at the Board, is to look at those schools that are achieving, that are in the top categories in terms of the students that they serve, the diverse students, the students who are economically disadvantaged and so forth, that can be models for other schools and to use it in the afterthought.
Madam Chair, that concludes our brief remarks, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from any board members regarding the information just presented? Ms. Rowe?
So when I was looking through all of the data that was sent to us earlier, I noticed that the choice schools tend to be uniformly less diverse than the other schools, and I'm wondering, and since we know that increasing diversity, particularly says economic diversity, it's a proven method of improving school performance and student performance, do we have a plan in place to deal with the possibility of less diversity as we expand our choice system?
So that was one of the first things that our work group took on, so I'm chair of the work group of school options, but the first thing we decided was, should we focus on zone schools or schools of choice? And after studying the data earlier last year, we realized what you're pointing out is that the zone schools typically are more diverse than our schools are, schools of choice are. And so now what we've started to do is try to look at that a little deeper to figure out what can we do to promote diversity and improve that in the choice schools. For one, we have a lot more resources such as marketability, and so we should be able to market and change programs, evaluate geographic preferences, pathways, things of that nature. But when we looked at the data, a lot of diversity is related to school size, and so when you look at a larger school like a high school, it tends to be more diverse, so the larger geographic area it covers, they're more diverse. So when you look at the school size of our optional schools, they tend to be smaller than some of, than our average size of our zone schools, but what our group is focusing on now is we've taken the optional schools, and we've basically grouped them into two categories. We've got the top 10 schools that are within five percentage points of meeting the definition of student diversity, and then we've got those that are then in another tier that are further away. And so our strategies that we're recommending is on those schools that are close, put a very detailed plan, working one-on-one with the principals. With the schools further away, have a more comprehensive plan where we look at transportation, district policies, look at best practices. So we're still early in the game of really trying to make long-term systemic changes, but that's the direction we're heading.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Register, thanks, guys.
Thank you. The second part of the report is an update, and thank y'all. Now I'll ask our next three, those who have part of the report, come on up, please. The next part of the update, we have seven slides, I apologize, but seven slides. You received two documents in the board packet and Friday, detailing the strategies that we're implementing, and may our goal of having no priority schools in 30 years. You also, you received a report this one, and you also received a copy of our school improvement planning grant, and we wanted to give you an update on that because I think that's one document or one approach that hasn't been discussed very much. Our school improvement planning grant was submitted to state earlier this month, and we'll go into a little bit of detail about what's been decided, those grant funds, and how that kind of works, of having a part of this, going through that in federal programs. I'm sure you noticed that the strategies we moved in the brick outdoors, we talked about the turnaround strategies, conversion strategies, and strategies specifically, national. They're the same three buckets that we've talked about all along. Our work in each of those areas has fallen very well. Tonight, I will focus and update our discussion on the turnaround strategies, conversion strategies, and these national strategies, as strategies have generated a lot of public attention, and important issues that need to be discussed. But as I said in the Tennessee Assembly, that public discussion has overshadowed the work that we're doing to address the majority of our priority schools. Three of our priority schools, three of our 15 schools are already being repurposed, and the two priority schools will be converted to charter schools this year, a St. Mary's St. conversion, and Kip conversion, that was approved by the board back in the early summer. That leaves 12 schools to be addressed with turnaround plans. In addition, if the traditional grades remain at two charter schools, if the conversion is a phase-in, then we will also need to address strategies for those schools not to leave them unattended. So really 12 of the 15 priority schools will have turnaround plans, two of those being sure of. As we put the wheels in motion to develop turnaround plans for each of these schools, there's an important point of distinction that has to be made between the schools that can qualify for a school improvement grant, what we call SIG grants, and schools that cannot because they've already participated in the SIG process. This is important because it goes directly to the resources that would be available to fund additional supports for our priority schools, and requirements of their turnaround plans to be eligible for those funds. I'm going to ask Allen to make some comments about group board.
Thank you. Thank you all. Very briefly, as most of you will remember, the priority lists first got created at the end of No Child Left Behind, just a little over three years ago, when the state changed its accountability system and applied for a waiver to No Child Left Behind, and that's what put in place the priority list and the things that we have today. When that first list was run by the state in 2012, we had nine schools on the original list, and one of those was a charter school, which we closed almost immediately. One of those was Jerry Baxter, which we ended up not asking for a SIG grant for because they had other funds that they were working on at the same time, and so the timing didn't work out for them to apply for a SIG grant last time. And then one of them was taken into the ASD, and of course, that's Brick Church. The six remaining schools that were on the list came under the direction of the Office of Innovation and became part of our I-zone. All six plus Brick Church applied for and received school improvement grants last All six plus Brick Church applied for and received school improvement grants last time. So they're in the previous cohort of school improvement grants, and that grant period comes to an end at the end of this school year. It's a three-year grant period, and this is the third year of that grant. During that time, during the last two years, Graymar and John Early have improved and moved off the list so that they weren't there when it was run this year. The remaining four schools have also improved. Napier by nine points on average across the three subjects for the three years. Robert Churchwell and Bailey by almost eight points during that same time. Buena Vista increased by four points in reading and seven points in math just last year. But those four schools started in the lowest percentiles, one and two, of the state, and did not make enough gains, of course, to exit the priority status in just two years. These four schools, as I've said, are in the third year of their school improvement grant now, and they have to meet definite ambitious targets this year in order to continue. But this is the first year that they've had full houses of quality teachers, innovative designs that empower those teachers, and the opportunity for those teachers to work as teams, to be very effective with their students. We're pretty confident that they're going to meet those targets this year when all is said and done. These four schools, however, are not eligible for the next round of the school improvement grant because they were SIG recipients the last time, because they are currently SIG recipients, and because their turnaround, their turnaround time period ends at the end of this year, they're not eligible to apply for the next SIG grant. So we'll be referring to the newly identified schools, those schools that are not those four schools that I mentioned, Bailey, Buena Vista, Robert Churchwell, and Napier. Those other newly identified schools will be the ones that will apply for a SIG grant for this time because they're the ones that are eligible in this cohort.
Thanks, Alan. I want to ask Mary Clark to talk about the SIG grant process now for the eight schools. And Mary, Mary pretty much drives this process in federal programs. Mary?
How do you do? I'm Mary Clark, Director of Grants Development and Management in Federal Programs, and I'm excited to be here to tell you about two grant opportunities that will benefit our eight newly identified priority schools. And one of them, you received in your packet, I believe, the Priority Schools Planning Grant. Just as MMPS is building its turnaround on lessons learned from other school improvement grant opportunities, so is the state building their work with our priority schools on lessons learned. And what they learned is that we need some lead time to plan before we actually start turning the schools around in these newly identified priority schools. So they have made available significant resources for LEAs, for districts who have newly identified priority schools. And we are applying for that grant. It's called Priority Schools Planning Grant. We applied for that grant, and we should hear next week, so we'll have something to be thankful for here at Thanksgiving time, we should hear next week what part of our grant was approved, and then we will be able to use the funds in this grant to make plans for the school improvement grant the federal government will be sending to the state and the state to us in 2015. So let me tell you first about the timeline of the school improvement grant. The school improvement grant cohort four for Tennessee will be sent to the state of Tennessee to see in January or February. Then the state will apply for funds. The state should hear whether they receive the funds in February. Then when their funds are approved, then they will send an application to us for Metro Nashville, for Metro Nashville to apply on behalf of these eight newly identified priority schools. For us to be ready for that, we need to have a chance to plan because it's one application, but most of the funds go directly to the eight schools. So the eight schools need to have a chance to see what they want to do. So by the time, during, so during the spring semester, we will use the Priority Schools Planning Grant to bring in new leadership or identify the leadership for these schools, identify the teachers that will be teaching in those schools. And the teachers who are already in the schools will be able to meet with exception pay, they'll be able to meet after school to plan, and they'll need meeting in the summer to plan. So that by the time we apply for and receive the school improvement grant funds, the schools will be ready to go with their new plan. Part of the planning will be around, as Alan said, strategic school design. We are planning to, and we've applied to contract with external vendors who are expert in use of time, innovative ways to design the school day, and so schools will have a chance to choose which vendors they might want to work with to help them plan their plan. This grant that we are going to hear from next week, the Priority Schools Planning Grant, is a chance to plan for the plans they want to put in the school improvement grant. Do you have any questions? There's a lot of information.
Hold on. Go ahead.
So considering we're successful in receiving these monies, and you said it's just one lump sum that comes down to the district for the eight schools, then how do you determine which school gets what and what percentage of those monies?
That's a great, that's a great question. First of all, the Priority Schools Planning Grant, we will receive those funds immediately. Those are not school improvement grant funds, they're other school improvement funds, and they have to be expended this year. So we will receive those immediately. We should receive those next week, from what I hear from the state. So when we receive those funds, we will, they will be held at the district, but we will allocate those resources for schools to use to bring together teachers for planning, to bring together leaders, to perhaps contract with external vendors. So those schools will be, those funds will be used to help all of these eight schools plan and to help the district plan. Then, when the school improvement grant is awarded, the school improvement grant is awarded, we expect by May 1st. Now, we don't know exactly what this one looks like because the U.S. Department of Education has not finalized this grant. But when they finalize this grant and send it to the state and the state to us, we will apply for that. What that will look like, each of these eight schools will develop its own plan, turnaround plan. The state will approve the funds for those turnaround plans based on what they think will work. And they have to all be aligned with these eight turnaround principals that you found in your packet.
So the turnaround plan then includes the cost for each of those plans?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
So there's two grants. One is to be, is extra resources to provide the foundation to make the other one work better. You know, sometimes if you get the school improvement grant, and we've had school improvement grant cohort one and cohort two, when you get those grants right before the school starts, it doesn't get the leadership of the school and the teachers in the school a chance to plan what they want, and sometimes they don't have the buy-in. You know, they, the leadership before them may have made plans. So now, with this Priority Schools Planning Grant, the leadership at these eight schools will be able to pull together their leadership teams to make plans for what they want to do with the school improvement grant.
Thank you.
It's really a good idea. I think it's really nice that the state is making these extra funds available so we'll be really ready for the turnaround plans.
Ms. Berry?
Yeah, another question. The schools have already written their plans, is that correct? No?
No, we are writing, what we hope to do is with the grant that we apply for, which we should be awarded next week if we get it, and I feel that we will, when we get those funds, the schools will meet and be able to make their plans. First, of course, the district will, everyone's input, will identify the leaders for the schools that will be leading the school going forward, and the teachers, and then the leader will gather together his or her leadership team and make those plans. Thank you.
Thanks. What the steps for developing individual school turnaround, this next slide, and that you will address some of the question and where you're headed with that question. So what's going on right now, and it is, and Mary said this, and it is a definite advantage over the last time to get a planning grant this time of year. Let me give you a specific example. If we're hiring a new leader from somewhere else, then we have the opportunity with the planning grant funds to perhaps bring that leader on early, or at least bring a person in for planning time so that new leadership, if there is new leadership, is involved in a planning process. It gives us an opportunity to recruit hyper-born teachers from across the country, and maybe bring some of them early, but at least not delayed until July 1st to start making plans for next year. If you start making plans in July, then you use a half year getting ready for plans, and you really, you really lose a year in the process. And I think this really gives us a jumpstart on that. The steps for developing individual school plans are what we're very involved in right now. That's the detailed diagnostic. We're very close to being through with that. We'll share those reports with you as we develop them. That's one for each of the priority schools in the district. And that data analysis deals with all of the performance issues that we're aware of in the schools, and then some non-performance issues, but characteristics of the schools such as attendance and mobility and suspension rates and all of those things. But also, we've been very particular about recording the input that we see from faculties as we've gone to the faculty meetings and inputs, input from the community meetings. You will see that in the individual reports for each school, the feedback that we got from that, the instructional rounds process that's been started and so forth. That's all included in that diagnostic for each school. We have already started addressing some of the immediate needs when we've tried to respond to some of the critical needs that we've heard coming out of the schools this year to provide some immediate assistance. And we're working on identification of strong leaders for the schools. The analysis, the diagnostic gives us information about leadership. It helps inform decisions that we make about whether leadership needs to change in schools, whether the leaders that are there can really pull it off. And then lastly, where we are now with the turnaround plans is, once we've dealt with that, then we want to engage individual schools in the turnaround planning so that we are not planning next year's school improvement plan for them, but so that that leadership team has time to do that during the school year. I'm going to give it back to Alan now to talk a little bit about what we're going to do differently this year, lessons learned from the first SIG grants.
Thanks. So the question is, why didn't it go faster? We all wanted it to go faster. Why didn't the improvements come faster? And we've identified 10 key lessons that I think get really to the heart of the matter. And each of those is built into the way we're looking at the SIG and what Dr. Clark and Dr. Register have been talking about in terms of things that we're going to be able to do more, do differently this year. This is probably too small for you to read unless you have it on the screen. But I want to take them one at a time because they're to the heart of the matter. Leaders have to be able to pick their teams, they have to be able to design a plan and organize their team around that plan and start on day one. And that just didn't happen the last time. The timing of the grant being what it was, the timing of our recruitment effort being what it was, the timing of identification being what it was, we weren't able to start on day one in that regard. So these are, these are the 10 lessons we've learned and we've adapted for in our planning. First, we need a national search for a proven turnaround leader as well as proven turnaround teachers. Last time, we did have candidates from out of the area, but our pool was shallow, and our ability and infrastructure that we now have in human capital to recruit on a national basis just wasn't in place. And as a result, we didn't get that kind of support that you're seeing in the 10-100-10 campaign right now, and we anticipate that our pool will be deeper. It's just as a result of that infrastructure effort, and we think that's really important. Secondly, consistently apply a rigorous screening process to identify turnaround principals and teachers. We had a rudimentary and rigorous screening process that definitely put the leaders through different steps. It was focused on turnaround competencies, but again, it wasn't nearly as good as what we have now in terms of the new leaders for new schools process that was developed through Race to the Top in connection with the state, and the inclusion of turnaround competencies and their importance in the selection of principals, which we've learned through selecting principals in the last couple of years. So we have a much better process. The other thing that that didn't give us was experienced leaders. And we're hoping this time and believing this time that we're targeting experienced leaders. We've got some really good leaders who've had some great successes, but they didn't have experience in turnaround, they didn't have experience in leading under these circumstances, and so it took more time for them to get their feet under them and get themselves going. Thirdly, you should hire turnaround principals four to six months before the start of the school year. I think this is absolutely crucial, and the timing this year, as well as the planning grant makes it possible for us to do it. It's probably the thing I'm the most excited about. We hired in April and May, we gave them the keys on July 1st, and we sent them into the building to meet their faculty pretty much right after that. It's very difficult to imagine that you can go from zero to 60 in that kind of a timeframe. But if we can hire in February, we can put them together with their teams, we can take them through a strategic design process, and by the time they get to the summer, they can all be speaking the same language. I think they can be cooking with gas early in the school year, and I think it'll really give them a leg up based on what we know from the experience we've had. Fourth, allow turnaround principals to identify and hire their leadership team three to five months before the start of the school year. And really, this is about picking their team. And again, the principals, last time, they went into a team that was intact, and they had to begin the process of identifying who were leaders and begin the process of building a team and identifying who wanted to be on the team and who didn't want to be on the team. That took a year and a half, and as they were going through that work, of course, the time was ticking, and two years later, they weren't as far ahead as we would have liked them to be. Fifth, support turnaround principals to remove ineffective teachers prior to the first year. Again, selecting their team, having that team in place on day one is absolutely crucial to getting a jumpstart and having the kind of rapid turnaround that we all want to see. Sixth, facilitate turnaround principals and their teacher leadership teams through an intensive strategic school design process. I already mentioned that in the summer, we had a little bit of an effort to help them, but most of the strategic school design that produced the innovative designs that are in place at Buena Vista and Bailey and elsewhere happened during year one, which was okay. But again, it was another thing that had to happen during year one rather than focusing on exactly moving the students and the kind of wraparound support that students need in order to be successful. Seventh, be sure to incorporate non-academic factors into the school design process and provide additional resources in the first two years to address chronic absenteeism, discipline, and family and community engagement. And the schools last time partnered with Community Achieves, but Community Achieves was also getting up and running at the same time. And so we had a learning and growing process, and we didn't simply get the kind of community schools approach in the schools that we really had hoped to see as part of the design. So again, having the time ahead of time this year, we believe will enable us to get those services in place and support the extra efforts that are in place. Plus, we know that we want to devote a significant amount of our resources to the efforts in those areas because those are the things that are the leading indicators of real success and real change in terms of opportunities for students. The next one is to provide flexibility to priority schools prior to year one. That goes to all of the changes that we put in place in terms of school-based budgeting, the flexibility that the principals have, and the ability to pick their teams and design their schools. And then lastly, redesign central office to support turnaround efforts. Last time, we had one office, but we didn't have the ability or the interface or the experience with one another to figure out exactly how to make sure that those flexibilities came through. And so we had a learning curve among ourselves in trying to figure out how to create the supports and guarantee the flexibilities that the schools needed in order to be successful. This time, we need to get that right.
Thanks, Alan. When we look at a little bit more about some of the other components of the turnaround strategies, I'm going to ask Susan, Alan, Tommy, and Paul to make some comments about each of these bullets. The first around the human capital initiative, Susan.
Good evening. So the first two strategies that you see up there are about human capital. It's about recruiting and hiring the turnaround leaders and the principals and the teacher leaders. It's also about addressing the teacher quality. As you know, when we talked to you in the Teaching and Learning Committee a week or so ago, we have the turnaround core, the 10-100 strategy that we put in place. December 19th is when our applications close, and we will have people onboard by February. We will be doing interviews and those types of things for both of those. As you heard in the previous comments with the SIG grant, with what Alan was talking about, and lessons learned, it's very critical and very important that we get a good, strong leader in place so that then they can select the teachers, so they can be on the ground looking at the staff that they have in making those selections. looking at the staff that they have and making those selections. So that's where we are in that process, is the first two bullets.
The intensive personalized school design, of course, that's the process that I described. Several of our schools worked with organizations like the Time Collaborative, the National Center on Time and Learning, like Public Impact, to develop differentiated roles for teachers. You basically have four resources: people, programs, money, and time. And you've got to allocate those resources in flexible ways that are directed at the personal needs of the students in the building. We want to provide the time as well as the support for that to happen before the school year starts.
And the fourth bullet talks about non-academic factors and wraparound services. That work is reflected in the safe and supportive schoolwork of the turnaround competencies. So we've looked at it from multiple aspects. One of the things we can do right now, based on information obtained from Doc Register's faculty and community meetings, as well as individual interviews with principals and deep dives into the school's data, we've identified very specific trends in relation to chronic absenteeism in school-based management and discipline. So we do want to do some things immediately, including looking at existing resources and how we can reallocate and repurpose some of those resources immediately to help the school teams and principals make the meaningful change now. We also want to look at the SIG planning funds to help with community achieve structure so that we can utilize the community achieve model or community school model to help the schools move forward to address all the wraparound services for students, families, and their communities.
The last bullet is to act decisively on academic benchmarks. And one of the things that we've struggled with is how do we get annual benchmarks with the testing changes that we're going through now? And Paul's been working on this, and we'll speak to this.
Each year, the Tennessee Department of Education establishes targets or what we call annual measurable objectives for accountability for each of our schools, and reading that. However, meeting those targets does not ensure that a school is going to avoid priority status. So our department has worked to set, will be, consider aggressive annual targets for each of the next three years that, if met, would ensure that schools, that no school would be on priority status within three years. Our targets have also included the subject area of science, which is included in priority calculations, but the state doesn't provide science targets. And I'd like to add that with the introduction of our academic performance framework last year, we began to move from a district-wide focus on accountability to more of a focus on school accountability. As you know, the district focus was a result of our status under no child left behind. Four years ago, the district was in restructuring status, the most severe category under NCLB. But over the last three years, we've successfully met our, the majority of our state accountability targets each year, and we've moved from this into one of the categories, the state's achieve category for overall achievement during that time. Our growth has exceeded the statewide growth at the time that Tennessee led all states in terms of growth of the National Assessment of Educational Progress. And we've seen our economically disadvantaged students, who previously had a wider achievement gap than the state a few years ago, now have a narrower gap. They've made their targets for three consecutive years on the state accountability system, as have our, the gaps have also narrowed for our other disadvantaged subgroups, for our African-American, our Native American, our Hispanic students. That's all part of the ethnic subgroup, our English learners and our students with disabilities. So the bottom line is that as a district, we're in a much better situation in terms of state accountability than we were a few years ago. The same strategies and especially the focus that we've used at the district level to turn the district around, now we can apply that to our schools that are not keeping pace and to target them for more aggressive targets and support.
Thanks, Paul. I'll go back to, I missed one bullet there, the next to the last bullet, and that's to consider contract with a consulting firm to advise the central office structure. We have been for a couple of months now in conversation with one consultant to really look at a district diagnostic process to determine, to come in and give an outside view of how we're organized to support turnaround strategies. Mass Insight is one company we've talked to. Of course, we had to do an RFP, and we're at a place where we're interested in doing this, to get that outside view and analysis of our ability and capacity to support, not to do work, but to inform us, oh, we organized the right way. I'm quite impressed with what they have to offer. They've been down a time or two and met with us, and we've had some conversations. So I look forward to giving you some more information about that right away. If I could have the last slide, please. This is for Dr. Gentry to ask for budget implications. I'll say it that way, there are some issues that may have an impact on our budget. We want to conclude a lot of this work, considering we are early in the budget process, so that we have that to consider. One is a process that we've been going through for some time now. Alan, Chris Ensign, and Gary Ritchie are on the point of looking at a student-based or weighted student funding formula. This is a significant effort, and we've got some good information on this and look forward to sharing that with you as we get into the budget. And essentially, that means weighting allocations to schools by the needs of students in that school. For example, economic disadvantage would carry a heavier weight, or students with disabilities, or English learners, or different needs like that, and that would be factored into the funding formula. We would like to share that information with you soon, early in the budget process. Ms. Shepherd, to give you some information to see what it looks like and what the costs would be. We really want to look at other impacts that we might have on the local budget. Extended contracts for HNPS turnaround core teachers, we're talking about an 11th month of employment for group of teachers in the priority schools, that's planning time. That's extra time for teachers to work. We think that's a barrier for including a leadership team of high performing teachers in the schools. And that will have some budget implications. And then sustaining, and the third bullet there is really important, those four schools that will use up their SIG funds this year, we need to look to those schools and see what needs to be sustained after the grant funds are gone in those schools and work that into a budget request for next year for those items that need to be continued. And then consulting firm that issue that we raised. That really concludes what our remarks are for the turnaround process at this time, and I'll ask if there are any questions.
Ms. Shepherd.
So you may or may not want to answer this question, but I'll ask it anyway. Has the decision been made yet around the leadership in the school as to whether or not it will stay or we will bring in new leadership at each of the schools?
At each of the schools, the answer is no. We're very close, though. For the great majority of our work through the fall has been that individual diagnostic and a deep dive into each of these schools. And so, factors to consider: how long have principals been in place? What's the trajectory of student success? What are the qualitative issues that we see going on in schools that may want change in leadership? Those decisions will be made early in some cases. Let me stress that we don't expect to change all the principals in these schools. We are asking them all to reapply, and some of those, those that are in the last year of the school improvement grants, you know, that's three years of time that we've had. And we want to look at that and make sure. It's a decision that's made on individual school leaders from January through the end of the school year. We may make decisions that the leadership needs to change in January or February in schools and know also that the principals who are in place are very capable of continuing through the year, and then look at changes and assignments for the beginning of next year. Still to be determined specifically, but we're getting very far down the road.
So I'll ask then a one question as a follow-up to that. If we have a great teacher, I mean, a leadership in a school that has its struggles and or challenges, and so this individual makes application to be part of the leadership of one of these priority schools, what happens to the, and we accept their application to be a principal at one of the priority schools, and what happens to the school that they're losing? How do we address that?
All principals, all applicants will go through the new leaders process that we've had in place for the past year for all principals and assistant principals. It's a very rigorous four-step process that has many people evaluating and interviewing. So through this past year, we're very confident in the leaders that were selected through that process, that they understand data use, they understand how to run a school. So I'm confident that we would be able to replace those top leaders with quality leaders coming right behind them.
Okay. I do have one more question. And I don't remember who addressed this, but if we have, what ensures, I think Dr. Chang has actually addressed this, what ensures, whether the qualities or the parameters that ensures a school from not being on a priority list?
What we've, what we've, what we've set are targets for each school that would give them something to shoot for to know what it's going to take, where they need to be in three years to be safe from the list. Now, how we get there is another story. But typically, the state sets annual targets each year that are readjusted. And so if a school doesn't make performance, you know, it doesn't make improvement from one year to the next, the target may stay the same. What we've done is a trajectory over three years that continues to rise based on what we saw happen over the last three years in terms of statewide improvement, and what it took to be clear of the priority list this time. We're going to project similar aggressive targets for these schools. In some cases, the schools that are near, you know, on the threshold, near, you know, around the fifth percentile, it may not be any different from the state target, but it has to be sustained for three years. Schools that are in the first or second percentile are going to have greater growth. It's usually in the neighborhood of seven to seven and a half percentage points year after year for those schools to make it.
Ms. Pierce.
Yes, thank you. I want to ask one more about the principal and the new leadership and the timeline. You said it closes in December, so hiring by February? Okay. And also, when you're evaluating the leadership, as you're doing instructional rounds and evaluating, what are you measuring? Like, what are your metrics there? Is it how principals attract and retain great teachers? Is it more about how they follow and support district initiatives and programming? What is your metric?
With the instructional rounds, it's not doing that. It's actually looking at the students and the work that they're being asked to do. So in the instructional rounds process, there's a SWOT analysis that's done with the principal and the leadership team, the teacher leaders, the coaches in the building, where they identify their strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats as they see, looking at their own data. So we'll take in pieces of their data, their achievement data, their attendance data, their discipline data, and then they do the SWOT analysis based on that. From there, there is a problem of practice that is determined from the data, and it's narrowed down to usually one or two things. So for an example, these are two coming out of one of the elementary schools. What evidence do you see that a classroom management plan is in place and the culture in the classroom supports student success? And what level of productive engagement do you see between the students and the tasks they have been given? Do some tasks appear to generate greater student engagement than others? And how do you see teacher promoting student engagement during the lesson? So that was an example of what all the observers were looking for, 15 to 16 observers in one school going into the majority of classrooms. So it is mainly looking at the work students are being asked to do and the interaction between the student and the teacher.
Okay, so that's for instructional rounds. What about the principal, more about the leader?
So the principal is evaluated throughout the year based on evidence that is identified ahead of time with student achievement data, growth, discipline, attendance, their tell survey data. All of that is put in place, formative assessment data, and then that evidence is collected through the first semester. A meeting happens in December and January with their executive lead principal or the network lead principal where they are scored on the rubric. The same thing happens second semester. They're scored on a rubric at the end, and the two scores are averaged together to give you an overall picture of the principal. That evaluation, I think, was shared with the entire board at one of our last meetings. And the executive lead principal, the network principal uses that evidence with the principal to determine the overall score on the team rubric.
Okay. And so when it gets to, what level does it reach when you decide to make a change?
Academic performance framework is one of those triggers that we look at trend data. So if we see a trajectory that's down into the review and target and keep dropping in those points, we look at how long the principal's been there. We look at all of the evidence collected in their team evaluations, then we make the decision to remove that principal or move the principal.
Okay.
I want to make a, I want to make a point that I think's really important. And when you're looking at priority schools, there are good people who lead, who are leaders in priority schools. There are good principals in schools who can't turn low-performing schools around. And we have to recognize that. It is hard work. And so, I need water. But so what we, it's okay, cameo, you know, that's okay. I'll get over it. But we really have to look at the quality, do principals have what it takes to really do what I think's the most difficult part of this work? And that's turning around a school that's low performing, particularly a chronically low performing school. These schools have challenges. They have a lot of challenges. And so, you know, we might have a very capable principal in the school who just can't do this work. And those are the ones that we have to identify. I've said this before, and it's human capital, and it's leadership and teachers. If you're turning around a school that's in the first or second or third or fourth percentile in the state, you can't miss. You've got to have a building full of good teachers, and you've got to have a bright leader. And if you don't have that, then you're not going to be successful.
Right. So in determining that, though, you use those evaluations to determine how you make a change because they might be a good fit at another school, or it's just not working there?
Other possibility for other jobs in the district. Perhaps not principals, but other jobs that are appropriate.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, one second. You want to go now? All right, Ms. Frog.
All right. So I'm looking at the plan, and I was most excited about the weighted student funding and the focus on wraparound services and getting more resources in the school. And I sent around an article to my fellow board members today that basically says what I believe, which is that we will never achieve the goal of all students at proficiency unless we address the outside of school factors. Studies say that non-school factors such as good health, good food, emotional well-being, safety, stability, enrichment activities, positive peer influences, parental engagement and encouragement, those factors count for about 60% of school performance, and, you know, teachers and in-school factors count for only about 20%. So I think, you know, we've got to get good leaders and good teachers. Unless we're doing this other work, we're not going to really make a lot of movement. And I'll give you a national example and then a little local example. In Massachusetts, which is the nation's leading education achievement state, performance gaps associated with income have remained consistent throughout the education reform era. The gap between low-income and other fourth graders was 27 points in 1998, and 11 years later, both groups of students had made gains, but the gap between the two groups was 28 points. So, you know, that's showing us that, you know, unless we're doing some other things, things are not going to probably change. And then you look at a school, a local, like Kirkpatrick, which has been a consistently struggling school over the years, I think everybody agrees. It has had five principals since the 80s, and it's very difficult for me to believe that all five principals have all been awful or that all the teachers during this time have been bad. You know, there are obviously a lot of needs at that school. So that's my commentary. And here's my question. So, oh, and one other, one other point. So when we're looking at solutions, I think the two big things that we need to be looking at as well are socioeconomic diversity and then the resources and the wraparound services. But my question about the services that we're providing, I'm wondering, first of all, are we really looking at this holistically? Are we basing this on best practices? Because what I'm concerned about is that we will offer services piecemeal, which really won't make an impact overall. That's question number one and then, well, I'll go ahead and do that one last.
So the way we identify the specific goals to measure in each individual school is by many with the principal as well as looking at our data, but also looking at Metro Social Services and United Ways 211 data. We use multiple data sources to say these are the specific needs in this zip code. But we also have conversations with parents and students. So once we identify the goal, then we identify the specific partnerships and processes with various, very specific outcomes. So if our goal is to increase or decrease the number of students absent based on asthma-related incidents, then we would work with the health department to bring in a very particular partner, a particular group of kids, and then case manage those students so then we have them in a cohort group to say, did we effectively decrease their absenteeism based on asthma or any other factor? So it is very specific. It's not a shot in the dark and we hope something sticks. So we want to have very detailed conversations with not only the schools, but the community to say, these are the identified needs for this particular school and community.
In the priority schools planning grant that we submitted, we hope you hear from, we included hiring a priority school support services liaison to work with the leadership teams in each of the eight schools starting now, you know, to help them plan for in their turnaround with the school improvement grant, ways to address school environment, school safety, discipline, social, emotional, well-being of the children. One thing is that the Department of Ed in this school improvement grant this time is emphasizing more community and family engagement than they did. They're emphasizing the non-academic factors much more and therefore we are, well, they realize, we already know, through our student services. So I wanted you to know that we have addressed that principle and we've put that in this pre-grant before we even get the other one. So that's great to know you have.
You got another question?
Yeah, another one, sorry, I didn't know if you wanted to go. The other question is sustainability and I think you've both addressed this, but I just want to make sure, are we partnering with a lot of community partners so that we have low to no cost services? And also, we are planning to put in the budget, is that what you said?
Right. The community schools effort, that's our layer for what it is, is growing. It doesn't cover all of our schools. Tony's coordinating this work for us and not only will it be in the school improvement grants, but we really need to look at it as a major component of providing support. I'll come back to one thing you said. You've got to have a great leader and you've got to have great teachers and they have to be supported and what we're talking about here is a support system and I completely would agree with you with that. So this is the work that Tony's doing and Tony, I'll get you to speak to it.
Yeah, we are exploring multiple funding sources and we already work with many of our nonprofits in the city. We do want to expand that and have them function a little bit differently because community achieved was self-selected choice, individual schools that wanted to go through the community schools process. So we will extend beyond that cohort of schools to now include our priority schools and a second cohort of self-choice schools. So as we explore future funding, of course, we will look at grant funding, we will look at federal public funding, but we'll also have to look at the mobile budget to sustain above what we currently provide in the student services department because one of the key components to a community school strategy is a community school site coordinator to take the pressure off the principal to coordinate the partnerships so that someone is really honoring that work and 100% of their time is devoted to the partnerships and the delivering services in the building.
Good. Ms. Pierce?
Yes, thank you. As part of the turnaround strategy, we have to choose a school for the KIP conversion and we have, you and I have talked about this several times and at one point you were saying that that would come before the board and now I understand it isn't. What is the, is your plan to bring that school selection to the board?
Well, so my directive is for you to convert a KIP, convert one level funding school to a KIP. We have a contract with KIP, you know, that's been approved. The conversation can occur. We essentially have two schools that we've identified as the ones that fit the model, fit the contract and those are Kirkpatrick and Englewood. So we're really not looking beyond that. I know there's a great deal of concern and angst about that and so we're moving very quickly to provide a good fit and that's not only just a KIP conversion, but what else do we do to help the children in those schools and to help those communities? So we expect to have that decision made very quickly and I'll refer back to your directive to me when you approved it. I believe your directive was pick the school and go ahead. Now, if you want to, you know, if you want to go back and reverse your earlier decision, that's your priority to do that.
I would like to do that. I would like to revisit this and if we need to make a motion to suspend the rules and make a formal motion and vote on that, you're thinking of this announcement early December? Early to mid-December?
Like first or first, first week in December if at all possible. And of course, what I would remind you is that the urgency there is to begin a planning process, transition process and early communication with parents because what I've said about the KIP conversion is that whatever, whichever school it is, whatever school it is, is parents and parents of children in the school need to have viable options for other choices if they choose not to be in a KIP school and that planning process takes some time also.
So if, with the urgency that's at hand, this has to be the meeting to discuss that so that we can have a vote tonight whether we get to vote on the decision that Dr. Register-
So actually what you want is for Dr. Register to come with and share his recommendations before a decision is made?
Well, I want us, I want us as a body, yes, to have a vote on that, to represent our constituency.
Yeah, we need to talk about that and not right now, but we need to discuss it.
But I'm asking if we can suspend the rules.
What rule are you trying to suspend?
That we have to bring notice of a motion. It appears to me that this needs to be done tonight and so I'm asking if we can suspend the motion and then move forward with a motion to bring this conversion school to a vote at the board.
I think I know the answer to this, but I'll defer to.
Yeah, I'm Cora Harkey with Metro Legal, the attorney for the board. Unfortunately, from what you're asking, I don't think that we can legally do that. The Opens Meetings Act does not allow for any suspension of the rules. We do need to have, any motion that's going to be discussed or debated by the board would have to be put on an agenda so that anybody from the public that is interested in attending would have noticed that and be able to be here.
Okay, then can we suspend the date of notification and selection of the school until the next meeting?
No, we don't have a date, but-
He said early, early December.
So is our meeting, so it's December 9th, so you want to put it on December 9th agenda?
Yeah, could we do that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
So now you have to give notice of your motion.
Okay. I formally give notice of a motion to bring the, to the board, a vote for the board's consideration for the KIP conversion school.
Okay, so now you have to understand, you're going to bring notice of a motion, you're going to make a motion for him to bring a recommendation, but you're asking him to bring a recommendation on December the 9th.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
So just-
Yeah, what you said is perfect.
So I guess what I'm trying to understand, do we still have enough time? Because I'm, yeah, so I'm thinking that's not right, we're still missing something.
You would need to just make sure that you, this, based on what you're asking, it would need to be at a different meeting, that you could certainly ask that maybe at the next meeting or you could ask Dr. Register to postpone his announcement, but anything that the board is going to discuss, any motion about taking a specific action, needs to be put on agenda.
So here's the challenge.
Okay, so we can get what you're doing there.
So she's giving notice today to bring a motion to ask Dr. Register to bring a recommendation.
Well, why can't we just put it on the agenda and call it a day?
Right, so I'm just trying to-
Okay, yeah.
Call it, that's not necessary. We just need to have the recommendation to be on the agenda on December the 9th.
Perfect, yes.
Because all of that wasn't going to work out.
Yeah, great, thank you.
You're done?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hunter?
Yes, my question is as it relates to priority schools and turnaround strategies that are currently in operations, is there a certain level or tier of teachers that are in those schools right now?
Yeah, great question. So by the hardest and with a lot of work with those teams, the schools that are, those four that are finishing up have almost exclusively level four and five teachers and all three, four and five. And that's a requirement that the SIG grant gives us the leverage for because it's a requirement to receive those funds. And so the next round of schools from the outset will have threes, fours and fives.
So there are none that are below three in any of those schools?
Yeah, not to my knowledge, but pretty sure it's all four, fives with a couple of threes.
Ms. Kim?
So I have a couple of questions I just want to ask briefly. So when you mentioned the consultant that's going to come and, which you're recommending to come to see that we're organized appropriately, I just have a question for clarity, does organize equip to, is that the same as skilled? So is it just looking at structure or is it looking at, do we have the right people to execute, manage, monitor the turnaround plans? I just understand the depth of that assessment.
Yes, and it's a complete diagnostic process. I'll read a sentence. Throughout the diagnostic process, the Mass Insight, which is a proposal from this one organization, evaluates the district's readiness, ability and/or commitment to pursue and successfully tackle school termine work. The process results in a manageable set of recommendations to promote organizational excellence and drive gains in student achievement. So they actually visit and stay with the district, look at the policies, look at the procedures that are in place and make recommendations to us. Of course, this is not a decision that's been made, you know, we have to put an RFP process out and the board will have to approve the finances for this. It's not a long drive process. It can be completed by March 8th and what I will do is send you a communication tomorrow that gives you a little bit of insight in what Mass Insight can do. Have to be, it's really important to be careful here because I think, you know, this is just one organization we talked to and we would, we intend to put an RFP process out to look for other organizations that do this. Mass Insight happens to be an organization that's been in business for a long time and has been quite successful with this.
Mr. Pinkston?
Got it. Three things, a mix of comments and questions. First, let me just deserve this process of circumvent the school board's committee system. We would not bring forth a budget or a capital priority list without lots of discussion ahead of time, skip it over committees and authentic public engagement is a sure sign that whatever comes forward may not have long-term buy-in and sustainability. All that said, when we did manage to shoot warm in a little conversation about this during last week's teaching and learning committee meeting, I used the analogy of the medical profession. Doctors have specialties, radiologists, cardiologists, neurologists, so on. I'm hard pressed to identify anyone in this district whose specialty is turnaround schools. Six of the 10 schools in the innovation cluster are now on the priority list, four of them were there three years ago, one made it off the list, but just barely. The reality is there's nothing new happening that we haven't known for years. The only difference is they're now on a list and people are embarrassed and we should be. And a lot of the ideas you're talking about sound great, but I'd like to know why haven't we been doing this already?
We are, I would say that we are a turnaround district. We have had success. Let me remind you that again, that originally the state was giving us three years. We only had two. The first year we received the planning grant, we've met success, it just hasn't been fascinating. And I do think that we have the expertise in the district. We're all looking at an outside consultant to give us advice on the way we're organized, but I think there are many, many instances of success that we can point to in this district. We've gone from restructuring to achieving the school district. We've had many schools improve, including the high zone schools. Most, and I'll get Alan to speak directly to this, but we've seen growth in these schools. It's just not as fast as we knew. It's time now, after two years, to take a hard look at what else we need to do and that's the process that we've been about since the list came out. Comments?
Yeah, I would just add that we have a long list of very clear lessons that were not in place last time that are different this time. We think those are very significant. We think those are part of the reason, big part of the reason, why the schools haven't improved more rapidly. And so I think that, you know, why haven't we been doing this? Because the timing was not right to do it the last time. We were not given the timing, the announcements were made when they were made. This time we have that timing in place, the state's learned just as much as we have. We have a better opportunity.
Mr. Pinkston, can I answer your comments? I'm going to give it back to you, but I just want to kind of expand on, I think, where I, where Mr. Pinkston's question takes me and I wrote this down. So, you know, I'm going to say the D-word out loud, dashboard. We've got the academic performance framework and I think the question was, has been asked a couple of times about what, when a principal or a school leader sees their box go from white to yellow, what does it mean to them? What really, what are the documented and concrete actions that change is to trigger in the school? Same thing from the yellow to red. Not only what are the expectations from that principal or that school leader, what are the documented and clear consequences? Because, you know, a Kirkpatrick wasn't red just three years and we know that. So the answer that, well, when there's three years of low performance, this is what happens. We know we've got schools that have been performing below what we would consider successful and to produce the kind of student we want. It's been going on for more than three years. You know, and a lot, I think even in this reporting, I've heard the phrase, which I've, we've had conversation about, is that we find things that we believe are effective and then we give schools choices as to whether or not they participate. That could be a funding thing, which is why I keep pushing that the fifth slide needs to be the ask. So I think to pull the thread on Mr. Pinkston's question is, you know, we, the data that tells us that we have 15 priority schools is not new data for the district. From the time I sat in that chair over there on the end, we were being wild with reports about the amount of data that we're getting. And so this plan, you know, has great things in it and it reads well and it feels well and it smells good to address these 15 schools. My concern is while we're laser focused on the 15, what's going to happen with the other 100, I didn't do math that quickly, schools and are we at risk of waking up at the end of this school year or the beginning of next school year and being presented with another list that looks familiar because some of these schools are still on it, but lo and behold, we've got a whole crop of new schools? Because we don't have the tools to give us the insight and the heads up and the ability to be proactive. I mean, I don't think that the plan is bad. I think we do the right things and we react appropriately. I don't know that we are still at this point positioned to be proactive in identifying right leaders for all our schools so that this list does not grow, that we're not being proactive in putting strategies to sustain success across the district where we see the white boxes and the green boxes. And that's where my concern comes because this can get signed off on and we can move forward and we can believe that we're doing the right things at the right time with the right resources for the 15. My concern is that we still don't have tools- My concern is that we still don't have tools that give us the visibility we need for all 100-plus of our schools, so that we're not having conversations like this at the beginning of next school year. I'm sorry.
I'm going to go.
I couldn't hold it. But you go back.
I'll go back to what I said a minute ago. There's nothing new happening in these 15 schools that we didn't already know about. The only difference between now and three months ago is, they're on a list. So, you know, why, Witsit Elementary School, which is in my district, which is a 55% English learner population, why were we not coming up with an individualized school plan for Witsit two years ago, or three years ago, or five years ago, to give them highly structured aggressive, you know, e-mail interventions? You know, I mean, and it's a rhetorical question, right? But I think maybe you might understand why people kind of question the capacity to deliver. The second point that I wanted to make is, the timing is obviously not great here. We're having this conversation while looking ahead to a new superintendent in seven months from now. I think we've all been in organizations that are in transition. It's assumed that a new leader will be empowered to come in with a blank slate. So if we really are going to be successful, and the work is going to be sustainable, then, Dr. Jenter, I think the board might need to have some more unique ownership in this to ensure sustainability, to make sure that we really are encouraging the development of organizational capacity where very little exists. I think we might opt to have some independent support to advise us, the board, on how to do some pressure testing around all this, to determine where the weak spots are and how we can help fill the gaps. Ms. Brer, I'd like to have that conversation in committee sooner rather than later. And then the third thing is, I really do support most of the ideas that are on slides, and I think I've got real, I know, like everybody does, real questions about some of this bizarre conversation that's been happening around East Nashville. But I do think we need to be careful not to suggest that school improvement is going to somehow hinge on whether or not we get SIG grants. And we must not forget, we're on the tail end of $30 million in Race to the Top Funds, and we have seen a more than doubling in the number of priority schools. So money is not the entire answer. We need to change our way of thinking. And, you know, what I've seen in the memo that you guys distributed, and then also on the slides tonight, doesn't, to me, doesn't feel like a turnaround strategy. It just feels like a checklist of stuff that should have been happening already. So whenever the committee meets again, I'd like to suggest that we begin by looking at some bona fide research-based turnaround work, like the U.S. Department of Education's School Turnaround Performance Management Framework, which I'm sending around the table. That document was designed for SEN, SC State Education Agencies, but the organizational principles on it easily translate to local education agencies. Articulating measurable goals and theories of action, aligning resources, time, money, people to make it happen, collecting and using data, to Dr. Jenter's point, to drive improvement, and, number four, accountability for results, which is the most difficult part, because the person who will be responsible ultimately, we haven't met him or her yet, potentially. So, you know, I've got very specific questions about the 13-page memo that's in the board packet, including, you know, questions about this transportation issue in East Nashville, but I'll stop there for now.
All right, so I can address, there was a lot of, I think there was a lot of questions in there. The document that Mr. Pinkston distributed is the basis of the work that we've been doing. We have committees that have been formed around these particular strategies and research-based that we have studied, and these committees have been addressing exactly these issues. And you'll eventually get those reports and the findings from those committees and the recommendations that were immediate things that we could do right now for these schools. In looking, in the question about why haven't we done some of this, let me take you back. We have done a complete change in leadership in the majority of these schools, with new principals on the ground, that the APF told us that we needed to do that. So we were watching those downward trajectories. We've implemented a complete change of structure and removed leadership at tiers of elementary and middle, and completely changed structure and brought in new people to lead and manage the principals. Title I funding is assisting those 500,000-plus is assisting those schools each year with extra funds to support their strategies putting in place to address those low-performing students. We've implemented reading recovery, reading clinics, literacy partnerships, with over $4 million in literacy that was decided on last year to target these schools, focusing on elementary, because that's where the biggest need was, that we saw, on the elementary-middle levels. So a lot of things, the bottom 25%, we are addressing, the bottom 20, the 6% through 25% with the same strategies, instructional rounds, climate walkthroughs, climate rounds will get moving pretty quickly. The wraparound support services, the academic support issues, services that we're providing, and the working with those principals and to develop a turnaround individual plan for those schools. We're not going to develop the turnaround plans for those schools. It is about the leader selecting what's best for the demographics in that school, and that is research-based. I do agree that it has to be research-based, and this document has a great starting point for that. But we have been using this document to drive our work. Any additions? So, I mean, what you're saying is correct. It is correct.
And we're doing it all already. All right.
Question?
Comment, Ben? I don't know. Yeah. Where are we going in this conversation?
Okay, guess that's a good question. Go ahead.
Sorry. Yeah, I was asked whether I had a question, comment. I'm not sure yet until I know, is this the end of the, this is it?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay. Okay. Sorry, trying to situate myself. I don't know how to express this exactly. I mean, some of the themes that are coming up, though, at this table, like what you said about leading and lagging indicators, the need for an overarching framework that helps us then govern the whole system. Because yes, when it goes from white to yellow, everyone should understand what that triggers. And when it goes from yellow to red, definitely understands, and the timeline, everything is widely understood. And there's so much energy for clarity, you know, of not just the action, but the accountability, so that everyone in the system then is well-positioned to be successful. You know, they can own their own destiny, they know exactly what they're held accountable to, they know, and it's not even just, it's the right mix of autonomy and directiveness, I think, because, right, in situations where we've had chronically underperforming schools, we know, like, we're using, it's like, love the same language, whether this document or other documents, a lot of the principles are the same. You know, and a lot of it hinges just on our ability to get amazing leaders in the building, like clarity of purpose, working as a team on a mission for kids. And so we know all this. Like, we know it, and, you know, we're all clamoring in different ways, for different tools and frameworks and ways, and you see the frustration sort of coming out, and like, urgency, 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 we feel it, because, you know, there's 6,000 kids sitting, more than, 6,000 kids sitting in our priority schools right now. You know, many, too many of whom, like 80% or more, who are not, you know, proficient or advanced in reading, math, et cetera. And that's, that is a serious situation. And so I think that's what you're seeing here, is just like lots of different ways of expressing it, like, can we get the framework, can we get the dashboards? Can we, like, we're trying to, like, wrestle this under our control, you know, and like, figure out, like, what do we do? You know, because we can't let another year go by where we're not making aggressive progress. And so, so that's happening, right? Like, that's just, let's just call it, that's happening right now in this room. And has happened in different conversations. And I guess the, I can't cut my finger on exactly what would give us collectively, maybe, the confidence that we are, we've got it, you know? Like, not that there's a silver bullet, but there's a set of strategies that we're committing to, that we're going aggressively manage and execute. And I think something, it is, there's something, it's like, right, like, so we have all these big principles, and, like, anything that's, whether it's honestly, like, whether it's in schools, or whether it's in sports, or whether it's in a nonprofit, or whether it's a for-profit that you work at, like, we know that everything rises and falls on execution. Right? Everything. Like, the every single, like, decision that's made, how do you use every single minute of the day, particularly in a classroom, when there's 30 kids? We talked about this in committee the other day, where it's just, right, you can, in 50-minute class, or however many, it's listed as 50 minutes, right, you can see, if you just take the time and, you know, walk around the classroom, like, which kids are on task and getting it. You know, and sometimes it's visceral, and you're like, yes, they're getting it. Then you can look around and say, okay, they are not getting it, this group. And the question is just how swiftly we move in then to intervene and say, okay, we're not going to stand for this, for kids not getting it. We're going to figure out how to coach and how to teach in that moment, so that they, they're with us, they get it. Like, that is ever form, right? Our ability to, in fact, like, aggressively move in that moment, right? That minute in that classroom, with that one kid, or that two kids, or three kids, or four kids. And I don't want to do that thought, except, like, right, like, I think that we, and this is clearly a hat, like, I'm not fully informed, like, I don't know exactly, because we keep talking about frameworks and big and huge data, and like, we have to think at a systems level. And then part of me is just dying to figure out, okay, are we all on the same page about what excellent teaching, in fact, looks like? And the rigor that's happening in each classroom every single day, and what are the leading indicators that would help us know well in advance, you know, that we're about to get into the yellow zone, or the red zone? You know, because I'm in classrooms constantly, I know, and a lot of us are, and the quality is highly variable. It just is. And the level of awareness, right, of the adults in the classroom, sometimes it's like all there, and they're tracking every kid, sometimes it's not, and that's where kids start falling through the cracks. And so it's like, in all this complexity, it's just sometimes you just want to know, like, do we know? You know, like, do we know what excellence looks like, and the level of rigor that we're looking for? And do our, the adults in the buildings know that, and what that looks like? You know, because I deeply believe they want to, if they don't, and they're very eager to be the best that they can be. And how do we then, like, yeah, I don't even know what to do, I'm just, that's where it's like, everything rises and falls, though. You know, it's the quality of the instruction. And so I've got to assume that the vast majority, right, because I do assume this, the vast majority of the adults in our buildings want to be great for their kids. And if it's not happening, and you step into that classroom, you know, where, like, a group of kids are just frankly not with us, how do we correct for that? You know, and I guess, and why does it take us half a year, or, you know, it shouldn't even take us a dashboard to know that? I mean, I, you know, I'm no master teacher, but I know education enough to know when I go out, I know good teaching. And I know how to give the feedback, I've given the opportunity. And so I'm just thinking, like, how do we allow that to persist, day in and day out, when we know? You know, what's holding us back? I mean, it's an adaptive challenge, it's not a technical challenge, where we're saying, here, use this thing. Here, take this plan and use it. I think that's a technical fix, and we're talking about adaptive things, where do we have the courage to actually give that feedback? What's holding us back from addressing that? And, yeah. And I don't know how, right, to, like, that doesn't fit easily in a dashboard, but I think, given my years in education and talking to many educators, that is where things rise and fall, and I feel like that's just a big black hole right now. Too many kids are falling into that crack, those cracks of the day-to-day execution.
Can I just take a stab at what you're thinking? If each of us went out and devoted ourselves all day, every day, to a school, we could get to a handful of schools in the district. But if we can bring in, identify leaders, and then empower those leaders to create teams, then the teacher next door is helping to provide the feedback. That's how we get the magnification through the system, so that we can actually get more people raising the level of expectations on the rigor. And that's why we're focused on giving them choices to empower. That's why we're focused on identifying leaders who have those experiences. That's why we're focused on teachers who not only really want to, but have been there before and done it before, who can be part of those empowered teams. That's why we're looking at the school level and focusing on the school level to get those teams to function. Because individual, one-by-one, one-on-one, one-on-one conversations in the classroom from me stopping through, that might be helpful, but it could never be scalable. The only way we can scale the kind of scale we're talking about for rigor and for reform is if we can empower the people in the building and bring some people to those buildings who can help to build those teams.
I mean, talk to me about your feelings about what has happened in the Innovation Cluster. Six of the 10 schools, you've had a net gain of two schools on the priority list over the last three years. I mean, it's not working, right?
I think that the empowerment that is happening at Bailey, and the empowerment that's happening at Buena Vista, and the empowerment that's happening at Napier and Robert Churchwell, do shed a light on the direction that we need to go in order to be successful, just like you're talking about, but it's got to be room to room. And it took us two years to move the teachers, it took us two years to learn how to work with each other, to empower those principals and those teachers at a high level, and we're just now to the point where we can see that. And we have to see it. But no, I don't think it's not working. I think we are demonstrating that it can work. And it is hard work to build those kind of teams on a school-by-school basis, but that's, I think, the only way that we actually get there at the scale that we're really talking about.
Ms. Bro.
I was going to say, I'll tell you what we haven't been doing, are the things I've been talking about, the wraparound services, addressing mobility, all these things. We've got these plans in place, but we never have funding for anything. And I think that's because we're not focused on that as a solution. And you look at a school like Jerry Baxter, where they've got 58% mobility, I mean, how in the world are you supposed to move those children up? You've got a different toddler classroom memory of the day. So I was wondering, Mr. Majors, if you would talk to us about what happened at Glencliff when you did these kinds of things and actually funded them? And the only last comment I would make, which I always say, is we've had a 42% increase in poverty in the last 10 years in the city, and we are not addressing that in our schools. We've got to do that if we want to see real sustained, long-term changes.
Well, the Glencliff experience was very unique, in that when I did take over Glencliff, we were in the lowest rung of state accountability, we were recently taken, being taken over. And it embodied a lot of what you've heard us talk about today. Of course, there were changes in leadership, there were changes in teachers. I was able to move a large percentage of teachers the first year. But aside from that, I was also given the autonomy to leverage my own individual funding. But I understood from the front end, I had a high immigrant, high poverty, low performing, and at that time, a very challenging environment based on disciplinary issues. So we did look at quality instruction, hiring the best people, aligning curriculum, bringing in System 44 and Read 180, adding additional reading specialists, all that was done at Glencliff. But we also had the courage to be innovative in how we use our instructional programs. If we needed to stop and have a self-check, and I needed to change to do school intervention, we did it, with the ability to do so. But our current principles and new principles will have that ability as well. You do the status checks. You do that along the way. You don't have to wait for an endgame measure to make instructional changes. But at the same time, we reached out to the community. We realized we needed a branded approach to get the community behind us, something our kids, they pride in. We did monitor attendance-related issues. We did aggressively address discipline-related issues. We also looked at things like pregnancy, looked at other factors that, how do we build a community, so that everyone understands we are working towards a common goal, so that everyone can have a college experience, so that everyone can be proficient and advanced? And of course, we never had 100% proficient in things, we never had 100% perfect in this, but we did make substantial gains. But it was through structured and strategic initiatives, hiring the best people, being courageous in our approaches, leveraging our funding effectively, and looking at more than just instructional needs of kids and families, we were a whole child, and then we were very intentional in reaching out to people around specific needs. Our first initiative was, how do we limit terminancy and dropout rates for our teen, our young ladies who are dropping out due to pregnancy? So we brought in three or four partners, with measurable goals, with measurable initiatives, and then, of course, we helped to address that situation, and that led to the formation of community chiefs. We do want to replay community chiefs at the district level, and you've heard it today. And one thing that we actually had a conversation today is, we've realized, when you say, what have we not done, Mr. Pinkston? One of the things I see that we've not done is that we have not said, as we are doing leadership and instructional reform initiatives, we have to marry that to school climate and social emotional learning, support for kids and families. We are there now, and we are prepared to make that investment to move forward. So I do feel very confident that we will make substantial change in the school system, not just with our priority schools, with our bottom 25% and our bottom 50%, even if that means we have to leverage and utilize our existing resources more effectively.
So I guess, two years ago now, we were in effort to keep state funding for family resources. United Way and MNBS did that and kept the funding. That funding was going away in the state, and we kept that, so we've maintained there in that regard. With the new priority schools identified, we have an opportunity with the grant funding to increase services, to provide wraparound services, like the community schools effort. We want to staff that. Some of the schools have had that support, we have not in all of them. And I think that's very much a part of this planning process, to look at those, look at those wraparound services or community school services. We are, as you know, one of the castle districts in the country that social and emotional learning- learning and supports, that looks different in schools, and so, you know, so we need to look at what's happening with mobility rates in different schools. One of us is a 76%, 76% mobility rate. They've got some good things going on there, too. And what we're trying to do is look at best practices in the schools that are facing that challenge now. When 76 out of 100 children change in a school, we need to do something to affect that. When 76 out of 100 move, you can be successful with a high percentage of those. And so, and that's, that's the part of the transportation plan we're talking about in East Nashville. We can do some things there we can't do in other places. And maybe we can reduce mobility rate, I think we have to, that's the wraparound service, too, letting people stay put. And so, so I think we're, I think we're ready to bring those schools and pretty much grants on them and to make a real difference in wraparound services, and through Tony's office, ask community partners to help. This is not a problem that belongs and resides just in the school system, it's a community issue that needs to be addressed in a lot of ways. We have great partners that are working already, and I, you mentioned Kirkpatrick earlier, and I'll go back to it. We have psychologists from Vanderbilt that work at Kirkpatrick, who've got a lot of resources in that school. It's just not working, and so, we have to take a way to look. It's not, not working the way we need to. It's an intense level of children, they've had many challenges, who are faced with many challenges, and we need to look at, look at that level of service and determine what else to do. And that's where we are now. I'll use, I'll say something else about Kirkpatrick. Two years ago, I asked Mildred Nelson to head there as principal to lead the turnaround effort. Mildred's a great principal. She was, she was an executive lead in the central office, and she took it with a challenge. And, and when I did the faculty meeting there, I saw a faculty that was really pumped up about what they had going on at Kirkpatrick. There were 18 humans. And so, so there's a revolving door, you know, we have to learn how to fix that differently and create stability in those schools and for those children, and that's part of what we've got going on.
You have anything else about it?
Ma'am?
Well, there was an earlier question about what are we doing differently, and I think there were some things that are in place now that were not in place previously. We only made the transition to looking at chronic absenteeism as a predictive, as a predictor of student performance this year. Previously, we're solely looking at truancy. Well, to be truant, you've already had 10 days of unexcused absence, that was a, that was a lagging indicator. Chronic absenteeism is not. It's an indicator we can use along the way to have a better idea of how our students are going to perform. Passages, Dr. Majors agreed to participate in passage because we realized that disparities are a realistic concern in our school system. For each of our priority schools, their chronic absenteeism and disciplinary percentages exceed the district average with the exception of WISIT. So, we know those are two areas we can have some immediate gains by addressing those areas intently. We also had a conversation with Mr. Chankis, because it's not enough for us just to say we're going to reduce chronic absenteeism and reduce suspended, kind of school suspension and expulsion, what's the correlation back to student performance outcomes? So, we've already met with Mr. Chankis, and for each of our schools, we've already identified roster of students that have identified chronic absenteeism or discipline that are either below basic or basic, that we provide intentional services, especially this year, so right now, that we can, if we can move 30% of those students to proficient advanced, we know what percentile gains student performance outcomes will be. If we move 100% to proficient advanced, what the increase in student performance outcomes will be. So, these are things that we are doing differently. It took us a little bit longer to get here than, you know, we would have liked, but we didn't know what we didn't know. Now, we do know that these are things that we can do internally to help move our schools into good standing much faster.
Mr. Pinkston?
I think, Spiritus?
No, you were next.
Okay. Roll quickly, so this KIP, go back to this issue of KIP. On page 11 of the director's report, it says eligible schools for conversion based on the criteria approved by the board last year include, and it lays out handful options. So, a few months ago, you unilaterally tossed out the criteria approved by the board, why stick to it now?
I didn't unilaterally toss out the criteria, I made a recommendation to you, I didn't have a vote. I made a recommendation to you to, based on the STRIVE application, that was not in keeping with the priorities that you set, but there were reasons for that, and you asked me. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't give you that response about STRIVE until you asked for it, it was you that asked for it. And so, I don't want to throw out the criteria now. I think that the two schools that we're talking about here have a downward trajectory in student achievement, they are viable candidates for a conversion to a KIP school. And we don't, we don't need to look beyond the criteria that we have now.
Well, you didn't unilaterally toss it out, I mean, you certainly disregarded it, so, you know, I think you kind of-
I didn't have a vote.
I think you kind of lost the moral high ground on this. The, whatever school you end up recommending for conversion, E3 says the director must inform parents and families in writing of proposed academic changes and get their input before decisions are made. So, has this happened or is this happening?
Well, we've had parent meetings, community meetings, that's what we've been doing this about. We've had a lot of input from parents in every school.
Policy says in writing.
We have a parent survey that we received last night from Inglewood, there's one that's been taken at Kirkpatrick. I asked a teacher who conducted that to give us that, and we'll have that information also.
What's the problem with just sending a letter to the parents saying, this is what we're recommending for your school, we'd want your input and feedback before the decision is made?
No problem.
And that's all going to happen before December 9? That's going to happen before December 9?
I see no reason why.
And that gives two weeks as adequate feedback for that kind of upheaval for a school community?
We've already had the conversation with the parents at both of those schools.
All right. This is wrong, I'll just say it, it's wrong what you're doing, how you're doing it. The East Nashville thing, I still am waiting to hear a kind of a sound operational or policy position for essentially destabilizing an entire part of the school system. We've got three of the 14 priority schools in East Nashville, or four, depending on whether you count Jerry Baxter, which is technically not in East Nashville, but it's close. You know, this area is no more important than North Nashville, which also is home to four priority schools. So, two questions here. One is, what evidence is there that what you're proposing will actually lead to improvement in East Nashville? And, you know, in fact, there's a ton of evidence to the contrary that suggests that all choice would further destabilize these schools. And then, the second issue is the NAACP last week pointed out that you are focusing on East Nashville with exclusion of North Nashville. What's the plan for bringing them into that part of the community and to these discussions sooner rather than later?
We can, we can certainly talk to NAACP. We have a process set up through our parent advisory council to hear from each cluster, and we welcome input from those clusters, and that includes the North Nashville cluster. The two priorities, the two additional approaches that have been suggested and discussed in East Nashville are simply a couple of additional strategies that can be considered to do, to make a difference in East Nashville because of the demographics and the location of schools. Transportation can be modified in East Nashville, that may increase equitable choice and that may reduce mobility.
What does equitable choice mean?
Equitable choice means that for many parents in our district, choices are available if they can provide transportation. This has been a concern for a long time. Choice is a chosen approach in this district long before I got here, and one that 25% of all parents elect. Now, parents can elect a choice school if they can provide transportation, or if they're, if they have means for getting their children to schools. Equitable choice is simply saying that if, if you're in a low-performing school, if you're a low-income parent who can't make another choice because you don't have a way for transportation, then we can provide a different kind of transportation away from a priority school to another zone school or to a charter school in East Nashville. It can reduce, transportation can be modified to reduce mobility rates, we're doing, we're continuing to study that. That's not going to be decided between now and the first of the year. We're looking at that. That, the East Nashville strategies are the reasons why we have an advisory committee. And one of the concerns that we heard from parents in East Nashville, problem meetings that we felt in East Nashville is that parents are concerned about viable pathways, K-12, we heard it again last night. So, let's look at the pathways, let's look at elementary to middle to high school pathways, let's listen to what parents would like to have in East Nashville, because that's been a concern. And I think we have an opportunity to make a real difference there. Now, do we have to do the answers? No, it hasn't been decided. There has been no plan already decided.
When does your North Nashville advisory committee kickoff?
I don't have one yet.
Whittlerby?
I'm not sure. I'll be glad to, I just received the request, and we'll be glad to look at a way to engage community conversations with North Nashville.
Ms. Spirit?
Thank you. I wanted to talk a few, a few more minutes about Community Achieves. I've visited Pond Gap in Knoxville, and I visited, one of the things I liked about Pond Gap, or Pond's Gap, I guess, is they had a washer and dryer so that families could come in and do their laundry and participate in after-school activities with their kids. They had dinner five nights a week with 100 children and 100 parents. They had wonderful coordination with universities there. I saw the community schools this past week at Cole, and I was very impressed, but it wasn't at the level that Pond's Gap was. So, I'm sure you've studied community schools across the district. I just wanted to ask you, as you're thinking about the budget next year, would you think about exactly what we need to make these Community Achieves schools outstanding? And let us know as a board how we can help you with that.
Yeah, we will, and of course, I will be very much informed by the new leaders and the community's input as well. Now, the model that you talked about in Knoxville is a little bit different. Their community school model is smaller in scope in terms of the number of schools, and it's very intentional for a particular community. I can't say that adding a washer and dryer in any Community Achieve school in Nashville is the appropriate response, but what I can say is things such as family supper and feeding programs are things that we currently do with our family supper in partnership with our faith-based community. There are other things that we can do, and those are conversations that we are engaged in now, such as feeding programs, such as summer feeding programs, extended learning programs, and out-of-school times options for, for children and families, as well as GED and other workforce development programs. But many of those, most of that work lives as the primary responsibility of other divisions of Metro Government or the nonprofit community. The Community Achieve structure is designed so that all of those entities around the end, mission goals and outcomes, based on the needs of that community and that school, can work through the Community Achieve structure to do exactly what you're talking about. So, yes, once we have the information and we are better informed as to what strategic needs are in these schools, those requests will come to you.
Thank you. And did I understand you to say that we do have schools right now in metro that are feeding our kids supper every night, five nights a week?
Yeah, and not, it does not always take place at the school, it's called family suppers. It's a Community Achieves initiative in cooperation with our faith-based community, and as we are having meetings at churches and other locations, which families come in, they do have a meal, and they're also being instructed, receiving instruction from my staff and others about any number of things, including common core, ways to support their child as well as, as well as other predictive information to share during those meetings. So, yes, family suppers have been going on in the district for over a year and a half. Yeah, the backpack program, that's a, not necessarily a component of family supper, but it's something that you see us doing in several of our Community Achieve schools, Napier's one, and Uly Combs Divine, that receive an abundance of backpacks every year through our United Way partnership, and there are other agencies that do that in our schools.
Good, thank you.
Current data on the no-cost lunch and breakfast program is 20,000 more meals a day are being served. And the percentage of identified foreign students free and, free and reduced price meal, those that qualify, is up to 77% now from 74.
So, I just want to go backwards a little bit, and I apologize for it. You know, I think the, Ms. Frock shared the 40% increase in poverty in our schools. And again, just back to my separating problems from symptoms, that's a symptom of what's going on in our city. And as I have encouraged us to budget, I will equally encourage us to continue to partner and to engage metro social services, because we are consumers of a lot of the fallout of what's happening in our city and in society, and we have to deal with it in the, the schools through behavior issues and social choices and lifestyle changes that impact, ultimately impact students' ability to learn. But we can't own it, we can't own all the solutions. So, I just want to caution us that I don't expect to see a budget that says we want to provide 400,000 meals five nights a week to students. That is not the responsibility of the school district. Recognizing that it's an issue, partnering and raising awareness that it's an issue, and it's looking to other entities and agencies to help with that makes perfect sense to me. So, I just want to make sure that we understand that there is a balance between what we own and what we help to facilitate resolution for.
Ms.
That's, that's why the community schools effort is so important, because the goal there is to marshal and organize those supports from other agents, agencies.
Ms. Shepherd?
To piggyback on Dr. Majors and Dr. Gentry's remarks, I don't know if McGavin Elementary is an official community school or not, but they have a wonderful partnership with the Church of Christ in Dobleson, and they do the family suppers, and they do the washing and the drying, and they do the backpacks, and they have, you know, all kinds of programs to support those families. They have, for the English learners, they have English classes twice a month or once a week, something like that. But, you know, it's the partnerships that we can make with the community churches, the faith-based communities, that really make a big difference and, you know, help solve that, that community issue around poverty.
May I just add one comment to that? At Pond Gap, they do a lot of work with the universities. We can, we can work with, you know, our Vanderbilt, Maharry, we can, we can work with them to bring a lot of these services into our schools, and I'd like to see us do more of that.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, Ms. Shepherd, capital needs.
Oh, okay, thank you. The capital needs committee met last Wednesday on November the 19th. I want to say thank you to Chris Henson, Chris Webber, Tim Murdock, and everybody else who helped share the information boards and organize the meeting. This is the first in several meetings to come. We will have the next capital needs committee meeting on Tuesday, December 9th at 4:00 p.m. prior to our school board meeting. And also, on that same night at 3:30, we will have a budget and finance meeting for the purpose of First Amendment to this year's operating budget. And I like to encourage my colleagues to reach out to their Metro Council representatives. We're looking at a $200 million ask for the year-one priority projects for our capital needs budget. So, please encourage our friends across the aisle, so to speak, to seriously consider our requests for our capital needs and both that and our operating budget, because our needs are real, and these are our children that we're speaking of. So, reach out to them, hold hands with them, do whatever you need to do with them, but, you know, make sure they're your friends so that they'll, our requests will fall on, not on Debbie or Kissa.
I wonder if it makes sense, I'm sorry, Dr. Gentry, I wonder if it makes sense to invite the mayoral candidates to come in and hear about our capital needs, either through or ask them to send their representatives so that they feel bought in?
I'm happy to do that.
So, along those same lines, what I would just like to ask is-
So along those same lines, what I would just like to ask is, do we have a process whereby, so we've kind of changed our approach to our presentations, and the infamous now slide five, that's the ask. So is there a way that you would want that to come to you, a different format? I know you don't want to copy five million copies of slide five. So I don't know how normally the ask gets that's sort of out of the normal framework of a budget. So maybe that's a, later in our next budget meeting, we could talk to Chris about how we consolidate those asks on top of, yeah. All right, thanks.
Ms. Beery.
Yes. The Teaching and Learning Committee meeting was the 20th of November. Katie Core gave us an update on teacher recruiting for priority schools. 100 teachers in 100 days is an extensive ad campaign across the country. And as of the 20th of November, 58 leaders had applied for 10 leadership positions. 163 teachers from in and outside of Nashville had applied for the 100 teaching positions. This process will end on January 31st, 2015. Jay Steele announced the district's intent to add a number of days for job-embedded professional development for teachers. Some options include extending the day, early release time, additional days during the summer, and bringing in community partners to offer enrichment activities while teachers engage in professional development at the school level. We're looking forward to hearing more about this. And apparently, school board members are enthusiastic about visiting some of our reward schools. So we will work with Dr. Register and set that up for January. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, in closing, we had a meeting prior to this board meeting, and a committee meeting. And I think an interesting question came up, and it wasn't as interesting to me when I first wrote it down, until I realized how long I've been on the board. And the question was really posed to us. We have to really come to a consensus about why we're here, why we're here, and what we believe, right? So what are our drivers, and how do we view success? To be asked that, after being here for six years, it kind of hurt my feelings, but I think it has to be asked, it's apparently a very valid question. But that reminded me of a quote I read at the bottom of somebody's email. It was a quote by Frederick Douglass, and it says, "Building strong children is easier than repairing broken adults." So that's my answer to your question. Building strong children is easier than repairing broken adults. And so I think that's why we have these discussions, and why we're so passionate, and why we feel obligated to challenge some of our strategies and some of our approaches. So Ms. Kim said it today, and she says it a lot, we have to have clarity of purpose and laser focus. And so as soon as you say that, and I always think about this, and I'll retake Dr. Register and Jay Steele and Mr. Henson back to the school opening at Jolton Middle. And we each got a student, and we got escorted, and I was escorted by Jason McCullough. And I cannot find a better example of clarity of purpose and laser focus. As he took me on a tour through the school, he didn't have notes. He'd apparently practiced his speech, and he knew exactly where we were going, when we were going to turn left, when we were going to turn right, where we were going to stop, and whose classes he was going to point out. So no matter how many times I said, "Wow, is that a bathroom?", he kept walking. And when he took me into the library, and there were bottles of water and cups of punch and cookies, I was like, "I sure am thirsty." He said, "Uh-huh. Now, this way you will find clarity of purpose and laser focus," there in Mr. Jason McCullough. So we keep talking, and you keep thinking, you have all these ideas, and we mention it a lot here. And one thing's that we cannot undermine, and I will say, in Dr. Bailey's absence again, a big thank you for being here. But the thing that's funny and ironic, and again, sometimes frustrating, is that we know that great things are happening in this district, that the school that you actually asked about is like a model, right? It has all the parts that we talk about. It has the socially-emotionally and learning focus. It has the wraparound services. It has the community partnerships. It has a courageous leader that's willing to think outside of the box, to make the hard decisions, to take control of their budget, to hire the people in their school building, to be able to drive to the success that they want. But the part I don't want us to ever miss, because I get stopped by principals all the time, you know, in the gym, on the treadmill, I just want my school. I want to own my school. I just want autonomy. But I have to remind them that what comes with that is accountability. So in Mr. Major's response, I also want to point out that he also said there were targets and there were goals that were measured and were monitored, and that when he had to intercede and stop and saw where things were not on track to meet those goals, it was, "Let's press the pause button for a second. Let's step out of this environment. Let's have a conversation. Let's recalibrate and make sure you understand what the goal is, and that I am providing you with the support you need to get there. Press play, and now let's move forward." So I want to point out also that in addition to the presentation from Dr. Bailey, which I'll come back to in a minute, that's also happening at Maplewood. And there's a common theme, as I went to a dinner that was hosted by Dr. Woodard, where he actually honored his teachers. What? Gave awards to his teachers for achieving fours and fives on T-VOS and doing things with Cambridge and making great gains and scores with students. But the part about that that was most impressive to me were the awards that were given to teachers by their peers. Had nothing to do with test scores. And TJ, you can tell me I got this all wrong, but there were beaver awards and squirrel awards, and there's another little animal in there.
Don't forget the goose.
The goose, because we got a goose award winner right there in the back with this TJ. But these were people who were willing to help, and they were hard workers, and they were always there, and they were leading the way in the way they approached things. So I know it's happening. And I know, as Ms. Beery and I talk about this all the time, when I get in the car and I finally call her back, and we're driving down the street, it's, "Yes, we know there's good things happening. How do we put our hands on it and pour some water on it and make it grow and make it propagate itself across the district?" And those are the questions that we're asking. That's why we want to know, what do you need to make that happen? Because it's not always waiting for the federal government to point out a problem and give us money. It's saying, "Let's look at our data. Let's find out where the great things are happening, and then come sit before this board and say, 'This is what I need to replicate a wraparound services program across 50 more schools this year, and then another 25 next year, and then a final 75 proper that in the third year.'" That's the question. That's the conversation we're begging and dying to have. But back to Dr. Bailey, who was very modest, but when I went to visit White's Creek, I got to meet six of his students. And they were all in different academies, and it was interesting and just exciting to listen to them challenge each other and say their academy was the best, because our academy got this award, or my academy actually got an award for the governor, and our academy actually did this. And they were very excited and passionate about that. But what was more interesting were those students who were seniors, who, maybe juniors and seniors, who had been there under previous leadership. And so one of the other interesting things that was stated in our meeting earlier was that, do we really believe and do we really think that asking questions about how teachers, how parents and students feel about their school matters? And I didn't think about this at the time when the question was raised, but now I know that the answer is overwhelmingly, yes, it does matter. Because the fact that those students who had been in a White's Creek that was known for partying, that when they walked into the school, the other students told them, "Don't worry about it. This is about to be the best four years of your life. You know, we do all the fun things first, and then we just think about doing academics, especially when it gets closer to test time, just to make the teachers be quiet." But primarily, this is where you're going to have a whole lot of fun. And then they got new leadership. And they got new leadership that went out into the community and said, "Things are different." And I promise you, they're different, and this is why. And so parents started to come, and they did tours of the school, and they saw a different White's Creek than the one that maybe their kids went to, or even they went to. So yeah, it does matter what the parents think. And then there were students there who had transferred from private schools. There was one there from, I think, the Brentwood Academy. There was another student there actually from MLK. That said, "Even though I was doing well, and MLK was a strong and highly academic school, this brings another element for me, because as an individual student, this is the right environment for me." So now I'm in an environment where I enjoy learning. Not that I wasn't learning in the other school, but I enjoy learning here, and it makes me want to learn. So it does matter what our parents think about our schools and what our students think about our schools. Because those are two key drivers to actually having schools that remain at capacity, to having community schools that are continuously supported by the parents and the students, and that we don't have to then keep asking the question about, "What happens if I open five more charter schools?" Because a charter school is not what people are looking for. They're looking for the district school. They're looking for their community school. Because their community school has created that environment where they feel comfortable that their child being there, and the child feels comfortable being in that environment and is learning and is growing. So I'll just say thank you, everybody, for your reports. Thank you, all of you, for what you do in your schools and your districts. But if you ever wonder why these hard conversations are being held and these meetings are doing hours and 25 minutes long, it's because if we build strong children, then we won't have to worry about repairing broken adults. Thank you very much. Ms. Rowle?
This meeting is adjourned.